I'd like to call a regular meeting of I S D seven oh one School Board to Order March sixth, twenty twenty four, three thirty P M. Central Standard Time. We'd like to welcome everybody here. With that, we'll go to item two. I'll turn it over to our Business Manager, Alex, and I'd like to welcome our Director, Director Martin here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I swear I'm going to go high. I swear in firm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state and that I discharge faithfully the duties of a school board member of independent school district number seven oh one, giving to the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you. Welcome back.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's an honor to be back.
With that, we'll go to item three, Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and one liberty, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item will be item four, to appoint a representative to Minnesota State High School, we do have vacancy. And at this time, we have Point Director Poulter and Director LaBardy should be on there. And then we'll go from there to item five, for the Community Ed Council, vacancy. And Title One also will be Director Martin. And then to appoint a representative to the A D, vacancy. Director Poulter, you want to add? That should do it for the appointments here. Correct. That should do it. With them, we'll move to item seven, Motion to Approve the Agenda.
Oh, move.
Support.
Point Director Poulter, support Point Director McGlaughlin, any discussion? Carry none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item eight, Motion to Approve the Consent Agenda.
Oh, move.
Support.
Point Director Poulter, support Point Director McGlaughlin, any discussion? Carry none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item nine, Public Comments.
We have none, Mr. Chair.
With that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Rupprey for items ten and eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
We have Mr. Todd Johnson that's here today from Boys and Girls Club of the Northland. Thank you for being here, Todd, and if you could step up to the podium and that mic, if you could just leave it standing, yeah, it's actually picking up some of the sound in the room, so it helps us, and it's too low if you speak into it, so welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. And thank you for the support, Superintendent Aldrich and the School Board for the Boys and Girls Club. We've been in Hiving now for just over a year, and in that time, and we're located at the Greenhaven Elementary School, and this summer we'll be moving into this building here. In fact, we were just given a tour of the facility here and shown the space where we'll be operating from, but we currently have, in the past year, we've served over two hundred and twenty-one kids in the Hiving area here, a hundred and eighty-five registered members and fifteen teenagers. And that composition, members, twenty-two percent come from single-family households, sixty-six percent qualify for free and reduced lunch. This is typical of the population that we typically serve. As the Boys and Girls Club of the Northland, we have sites in Duluth, Superior, Grand Rapids, Coleraine, and now Hiving. So we've been around for over fifty years, providing service to the young people of our communities, and so we're pleased to expand our service into the Hiving area here with the help of Kim McGlaughlin and our Board of Directors here. They've done a wonderful job. In fact, we have a couple other members of our board, Carrie, and our newest member, Kirk Lewis here, who has just approved for our Board of Directors as well, our local board, so thank you to you guys. So what we've, we've been really impressed with, with the transformation that has taken. We started the programming up here and seeing a few kids a day. That has now, in fact, twenty twenty-three, our average daily attendance was thirty-three kids during the school year. Now for twenty twenty-four, we're averaging fifty-four kids a day that we're seeing. Obviously, there's going to be a transition, moving here to the high school, and we're hoping that we will expand our services and attract even more kids, especially those in the junior high or middle school and senior high school students, so. Our programming revolves around three pillars: academic success, character and leadership development, and healthy lifestyle. So we offer programming in all of those areas. Some of them are national Boys and Girls Club programs, others are programs that we develop locally because of the needs and interests of the kids that we serve. Besides our programming, we also do a snack and a meal. Last year, we served over seventy-three hundred snacks at the Hiving site and over three thousand three hundred meals for club members. And so we, like I said, we are really excited about the opportunity to expand and serve more kids in the Hiving area here, and with the Boys and Girls Club, our number one priority is our members' safety, and so we take that very seriously. That includes background checks, annual background checks for all of our staff, all of our board members, and we have very strict policies designed to protect the kids that we serve. So like I said, we're excited to be here, and I'll open up if you have any questions. I also have Emily Burnside, our Director of Operations, with us today, too, so. Any questions or Kim, any comments?
I think you've covered it.
So you saw the new space. What are your thoughts? What do you think? Is it, is it what your needs, I guess would be the question.
The space is going to be great. There's going to be some challenges with, you know, being located on that floor and where we're controlling the traffic of kids and, you know, kind of controlling them within the building. And so our staff are very good at, at maneuvering around those issues. We're in a number of different schools, and every school site is different, but I think that was the, the one big challenge that we see. You know, kids getting bussed here, what entrance, do parents pick them up, all of those different things, and what's that going to look like? And I'm sure it's going to be chaos for a while, but we'll get it figured out, and like I said, we're really excited about being here and being able to provide programming for, for more older kids.
And our initial thought in kind of looking at the whole space was Renee had a good idea of the buses that are picking up the high school age students can be on one side of the building. The thought, initial thought, certainly subject, subject to change and busing, but having the drop, the students that are being dropped off to come to the Boys and Girls Club, dropped off on the Ninth Avenue side, being met there and coming into the cafeteria, having a snack there at that point, by, by the time they left, probably the high school would be pretty much cleared out, or there would be enough staff down there then to escort them up the steps into the Boys and Girls Club space, so.
Well, it is, I mean, it's hard to believe because there's sixteen to eighteen hundred people in this building every day, but when the bell rings at the end of the day, the place is like a ghost town. Two forty, they clear out quickly, so I don't think we'll have a lot of co-mingling in the hallways. Might be some spring sports kids and things like that that are stuck in the, in the halls for a while, but.
Yeah.
And I'm excited for you to be here, Todd, and I'm excited for the kids, because I agree, I think the high school students, we could, there's a bigger need there that just isn't getting served, because I think some of those kids are anxious about going down to the green and going back to an elementary school. I think this would be awesome.
Yeah, and I completely understand that. I know we've got staff that are excited about serving an older population as well, and so we'll adjust our programming accordingly, so.
I think I would be remiss to say, too, it's we're fortunate to have Carrie be on the board, because knowing the school and knowing the Boys and Girls Club and the needs, she's been amazing to advocate for the Boys and Girls Club, so, yeah.
And I would say, you know, when I came to Renee with looking at if we could find this, she worked very hard to get us a meeting, and I think that's our best opportunity that we have for this building to all be, finding that many girls in one area is very difficult in any building in the school, so I appreciate it.
I mean, ideally, it'd be great coming by the cafeteria and having rooms down there, but there are cooking labs, welding shops, and art rooms, and that just wouldn't work, so.
So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, yes, well, next we have Ms. Cindy Olson from ARC, is just going to give us a little update on ARC services and, and what, what type of...
Joel, I just sent you the presentation.
Do you need help?
Or can I just plug in my computer?
You want, you want to let it appear?
Yeah. I suppose we can get started while Joel's getting the, getting the PowerPoint out. So Rick had asked me at a meeting on, two Fridays ago, for last Friday?
Yes.
If I would come and talk to you guys about the relationship between ARC and Hiving and what, what does ARC do for you, and I know right now we have every district looking at making budget cuts, and so when you see that ARC bill, I think it's important that you understand what we do and how we work together. Perfect. And so Rick told me I could talk as long as I want, as long as I was done by ten minutes, in ten minutes, so.
You can go till twelve.
Can I go till twelve? Okay. Thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
So I'll just kind of do briefly from the beginning.
You said like arrow in the lower.
There we go.
At least I think you want to.
Okay. It's nice.
I don't use those computers, so I don't know what they're doing.
That one's in. There we go, okay. So ARC is a joint powers organization established under statute course seventy-one point five-nine. Originally, we were called Northeast Minnesota Education Computing Consortium, and apparently that was a multiple, so they decided to change it to ARK, Regional Computing Consortium, because that's so much smaller, but we go by ARC for short. We changed our logo in two thousand and fifty. We had the one up on the left-hand corner for almost forty years. We have thirty-member school districts, and when I say member school district, they are our owners. So you guys basically own ARC and you direct what we do through our Board of Directors. We have an eleven-member board, so we take all of our school districts, put them into categories by size, and out of each category, we have one school board member and one superintendent who represent that group of districts. We can't have a superintendent and school board member from the same district, just, just because it would give them so much power. We also have two business managers who serve on the air corps and one instructional support person. Lately, it's just been the Mars coordinator, we had the Mars coordinator from Grand Rapids for many, many years, and now we've got the Mars coordinator from Hagan. I did, I did do some research and found out that there's been somebody on the ARC doors from Hiving since nineteen seventy-nine, started out with George Sizmo, I don't know if I'm saying that right.
Yes.
Scott Ortman was on for twenty-five point five years, and he held the record for about six months until Sue Casle from Hill City took that over. Bob Beluso was on the board for five years, Brad Johnson for three and a half years, and Alrick is on the board for about five, four years. We moved to, to Hermantown from downtown Duluth. We were on the corner of Lake Avenue and First Street. We had a training lab that would fit about twelve people, but everybody hated coming downtown because we were across the street from a needle exchange clinic, and sometimes just walking to ARC could feel very uncomfortable. So when our lease was up, we started looking at buildings and selected the one in Hermantown that used to be an urgent care clinic. So we were able to use all of their cabinets, their X-ray, where they hold their X-rays, we used that to store paper. I mean, we were able to use a lot of stuff and recycle and save on the cost of building that building out. So it's been really great. We have a lab now that can hold about twenty-four for training and about fifty if we just have regular meetings without the need for anybody to use their computer. This is our board, so you see Rick up on the top. Steve Anderson has been on the board for, I guess he's probably been on for twelve years now. Right as COVID hit, we had school, we had one school, one board member who had more than a year experience, and that was Steve Anderson. Everybody else had a year or less, and we were, we started working on strategic planning, and our very first meeting, we had to hold it remotely because they shut everything down, we couldn't be there personally more. But these are the people you guys can talk to if you're having any issues. You guys can all talk to if you're having any issues about that. So in two thousand, we worked on updating our vision and mission statements. It hadn't been updated since nineteen seventy-five, when it basically said we were your data processing people. So in the olden days, you guys would take long paper that had, it was forms, and you would fill it out for every payroll person. You do time cards, you put your employees that way, you send it in a package to ARC, and we had a whole office full of key punch people who would just key that stuff in the mainframe, and the mainframe was about the size of this table here. Right before Y two K, we went to a smaller computer system that we have today, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. But we don't do data entry for you guys anymore. We basically work on the administrative side of school districts, so they changed the mission statement to say we provide services, deliver training, and promote innovation for, to support our reaches school districts. We want to be the first place district staff goal when we have a question, and I always say, I frequently don't know the answer to the question, but I usually know somebody who does, and that's sort of what we, we hope to help our districts do. And then our goals are just to deliver training and guidance, facilitate collaboration, and work on innovation. Another thing we tell the districts is that our, our role is to tell you the rules on how to do things like for the E R system or for something to do with M V E, but we are not the police. Every district has a, a different level of risk aversion, and they can choose to work in degree or not, and we aren't going to ever report you for that, but we will help you understand what the rules are and what those systems are doing. So we have three basic areas of support, and we'll start with the, probably the one that's most important to every person in the, in your district, and that is payroll. So when Y two K was happening, and for those of you who are young, Y two K was when the year was going to turn over from what we used as a two-digit number to zero zero, and they thought the world was going to come apart. And so for probably eighteen months, we went to meetings in the cities, and we did all sorts of things to prepare for what we thought was going to be Armageddon. While we were working on that, we started working with four other regional centers just like ARC, and ARC is considered a regional management information center. So we worked together, and we bought a shell of a software system. Now, I don't know how many employers have nine, ten, eleven, twelve-month employees, I don't know how many have multiple contracts, I don't know of any who have summer payoff payrolls. So that payroll system had to be designed to work for school districts, and so it took a lot of time to get that done. And since that time, so we, we share programmers, we have six programmers and two analysts that work out of the same cloud office, and they have been doing all of the enhancements and keeping these up with, putting in new tax tables. When the Affordable Care Act came out, initially, ARC's position was going to be, well, we aren't going to support that because it was new, we didn't understand the rules, and then we realized that even if we, even if our districts used a different system, we would end up answering those questions. So we quickly became A C A Smart, and our programmers built an A C A module in Smart, and we had it up and running by the time the first deadline was due. We've done the same thing with wage theft, which happened when the legislature passed that in May of a certain year, and it was supposed to be implemented by July. We didn't make the July cutoff, I think we made it by September, but I don't know that anybody else made it either. We have a module where we've created a way for everybody to handle the earn, stick, and save type, which has sort of been all of a sudden something you have to do. We have a budgeting module where you take your payroll, put in all your new steps and lanes, run a payroll for a year, and then you can import that to your general ledger or as a budget. The nice thing about that is your codes are all correct, and the percentages of where people are working are correct, saves a lot of time for your, for your people who like to budget in detail. Has a star module, wage theft, all of the quarterly reporting for, for your taxes, your running for one, basically are recorded on Smart, and you can fill that out and send it out automatically. We have the first report of injury, we do social security number verifications, we help you with W two reporting, the employee self-service, where you can go in and change your information, look at your time cards, look at your W two. So your districts are going to balance the payroll, put in all the time cards and make sure everything balances, then they let us know that it's ready. I think I'm probably going to oversimplify this, but we hit a button, and your payroll is processed. Then we report all of that stuff to T R A, P E R A, all of those things, those government agencies that we have to report by, those are all done for you. We print reports and send them to you, and then your B C, Director Cosse, five, it was sent. So in payroll, we do training on all of that stuff, and then we also work with new employees who are branded in payroll or branded in the district. We have a lot of workdays, so with this great lab that we have, we're able to act the workdays where districts come in and they, they can do things like work on their ten ninety-five report for A C A reporting. There's a lot of cleaning that has to be done to the system, not get, import your file from your insurance company, and then make sure it matches everything you have, so there's a little bit of work that happens. And districts come in, we'll have a group day where they come in four or five at a time, and we work through that, we work through the wage theft statements, we work through the budget, we work through the S S T all together. We also have open office time, and that's something that not every district uses, but there are a lot of districts who can't get a lot of stuff done at their desk because they're getting interrupted constantly. So they're always welcome in ARC. We have a couple of extra offices because we've reduced our staff number, and districts are more than welcome to come in for a day or two. We've had districts, a power, something happening with the power in Colgate or Carlton, and we had districts come in for days so they could run the payroll, and it works really well. So the new location has been a godsend for that. Any questions on the payroll stuff? Okay. And then we'll go to finance, and that's the area I started in. Just like payroll, we bought a shell for finance. Over the years, we kind of enhanced it to create an online ordering system, so if your teachers, and I don't know if you guys use this, but if your teachers wanted, they could go into the employee self-serve, and they could order supplies for their classroom, and it can be transferred to a budget in that order. And so some of that enhancement of the program has been done all along the way, and again, those costs are shared between the five regions who work on Smart. There are different budgeting modules, so you can budget your payroll in payroll, or you can budget your payroll in findings. If you don't need as much detail, you can just say, hey, I'm going to give everybody a, when we got a two percent increase, and if you put in steps and lanes, it comes up to four percent, we can just put four percent, do it easy. We can do that. We also are able to depreciate fixed assets, so that's something that's, it's not relative to, we're both twenty-five years old, but school districts didn't have to keep track of all of their, their fixed assets or equipment, their buildings, and right around nineteen ninety-eight, the government standard, accounting standards were required us to do that, so now we have a process in Smart that will be that for you. We do U F R's training, clients, and reporting. So we'll go through your, your general records and make sure that they work on the, there's a grid that they have to follow, and we'll work to make sure that they work on that grid. We'll let you know if they don't, and you come in and fix everything, or we'll help you fix everything, and then at the end of the year, when your audit is done, we'll do your required submission for you, and we'll probably foster you into being a done so. We're really good at that. So we do training on all of the stuff that's on the left-hand side there. We also have a fiscal year-end section where we have what we call the Green Bible, and it, it's a reference guide for anything you need to know for your, for your audit, like this is where you can find this information, this is what you have to do. Jen does a really good job of going through that. There's also a small green book that Eve goes through to help everybody process their accounts, be able to post receivable, so that the system will do some of those audit papers for you, so it works pretty smoothly. We had, we just had the profile session, and that's where we take information, final information from the end of the fiscal year, so it was done in June, your audits weren't done until November, and then the state processes that information and sends it out to us, and we slice it, add dice it, any, any which way you can think of. Well, we'll take your food service costs, like your year-end, and we'll take, I don't know, teachers, but people, and all sorts of stuff, so you can compare yourself to districts in our region. We don't compare ourselves to districts outside of our region, but if you ever were in a situation where you wanted to compare yourself to a district with similar in size and maybe demographics as you, Jen has that information, and she would help you do that at any time. We have workdays just like payroll, we have audit workdays where people come in to work on your audits, we have Baker Consiliation, one-on-one assistance, open office time, just like the, the payroll people, where you can come in and work in quiet, and then we do a lot of budgeting. Right now, we're getting a lot of people coming in and saying, I want you to help you with my budget, or I did my budget, I want you to make sure it turns out, that kind of stuff, so we do that. So other support, and some of these are, the other support, some of them are a fee for service because we don't do it for all of our districts. So we have a shared business manager service, and we've been trying to get this up and running for a while, but one of the problems was we didn't have enough people who wanted to use a time or a full-time person. But we were fortunate enough that one of the business managers we work with wanted to retire, but she didn't want to fully retire, so she wanted to work part-time, and so Lori from Grand Ray is working in Reemer as a business manager remotely. I think once a quarter, she goes to a board meeting, but otherwise, she does everything remotely, and it's worked really well. We do a lot of emergency business manager support. If you suddenly lose your business manager for some reason, we, we work with you on that. We can prepare your audit work papers, so if you have an instance where a business manager quits and it's the end of the year, or they have a contract to business services and it's the end of the year, ARC can help do those audit work papers. Jen at ARC serves on the, serves on the U F R's committee at the state, so she does a good job of trying to keep that information straight so that it doesn't make life too complicated for you. This last go-around with contracts for software was kind of a nightmare, but she, she got everybody going in the right direction. And then I always say, we can be your friend. When you were in elementary school, you always said, now tell so-and-so I liked him, but don't tell him I told you to tell me. We do the same thing with the state of Minnesota or other agencies, we'll always act as your anonymizer, so you won't get into trouble for anything. Am I past my twelve minutes? I might, I'm sorry. I'll try to talk a little faster. In the student area, so in the, in the beginning, we had MARS or MAC School and the Lynn School, Mac and Tosh and Middles, on the main, and then when that went away, the state decided that they wanted to go to the open market and let vendors have a, a go at providing that service. So we tried a couple of student information systems that did it work, and then in around two thousand and four, we had demos by three of them with the object, with the idea that we were going to select for this region and support it, and they selected it in the campus. We had, I think, twenty-six people on that team, and they were putting together. So we were even the campus's very first education service agency that they worked with. They had about five employees at that time, and now they have over a thousand around the U S, so they've grown quite a bit. But just like, similar to Power School, it's got all of the functionality that Power School does. For a long time, they For a long time, they told us we couldn't support Power School. And then Rick asked for the 13th type, not you were, they were, but for the 13th type, I've probably been asked, why can't we support Power School? So I called it through the campus, and I explained it. Beth had a possibility, wanted to even work for a couple hours with me. And we didn't want to lose Beth. She's really a great girl. So I told them what was going on, and they said, oh yeah, you can do that. And I had been fighting with them for all the time to be able to offer that service. And so we're offering that as well right now. We do all sorts of training. We'll do, help you set up your food service point-of-sale. There's a payment thing in, in the campus. We'll help you with your MARS group. We've also been doing MARS, and it had high conversion. And I know that Beth has also been doing that for the Power School districts that we have. We have a few workdays in the lab for students. Scheduling is a really good one, where you have your principals come in and sit down. And apparently, you can just drag and drop classes into a certain area and then hit a button, and it'll tell you, okay, you populated 87 of your kids and 80% of your classes, and then you can populate the rest. But that works pretty slick. Civil rights data collection is a report that's required every year. We have workdays where we help districts pull that information out of campus and submit it. I think we've also helped districts who use Power School with that. And then again, we've had that prior to this. So other areas of support. Every year, we do a summer superintendent session. It used to be it was basically about school finance. And you can only listen to that for so long before you go to sleep. So we miss a little bit of school financing, all sorts of other stuff. Last year, we had a guy who worked with us on communications skills. And it was really, it was really a good session. So it's two days. Last year, the afternoon, the first day, we actually, we played, what do you call that? We did a little beanbag, you know, little holes, just to kind of create that bond with all of our superintendents. We have had legal issues in there. We've had Kathy from the Department of Education come in and talk to us. We do a lot of legislative review. We work with MREA. I don't know if you guys remember, there is.
We are.
Yeah, okay. So we've helped Bob a lot. Bob in the heart used to be a superintendent in our region, so he's very comfortable calling to ask for questions, to ask for help. Cybersecurity sessions, we do, when COVID started, there was definitely a need for superintendents to talk to each other on a frequent basis. So we started a, we called it cyber, cyber sugar, not cyber, excuse me. We called it COVID, the COVID Zoom Hall. And then we eventually told the health department we didn't want to do it anymore because we weren't talking about COVID anymore. And so we had to remain, so we called it, let's talk Thursday. And it's a great way for superintendents to just ask each other questions. And I kept thinking, eventually, this is just going to die down. And we're still getting almost all of our superintendents every week, so it's been nice. We help with, oh, grouping operations. So we have grouping us for southern superintendents and northern superintendents, all the superintendents, business managers. So if Alex had a question for, like, I wonder how other business managers do it? He wouldn't have to type in a bunch of email addresses, he could just type one, and that gives him to all of the superintendents. We host the technology user group meeting. So we're basically the fiscal agent can set up the meeting. And Joel this year is the chair, and he's done an amazing job of working with our districts to try and push them towards doing as much cyber preparedness as we can. We do help districts in hiring business managers. We had a district who had a board members, and he's worked at a gas station and had no accounting experience. And so that was the first time we helped him with interviews. And so we developed some questions, we developed a test that this is the projective or perspective business manager could take. And that test basically just makes sure they know what a debit and a credit is and how to understand a company. Because we have had business managers with absolutely no accounting skills be hired. And it makes it a little bit easier. So we have questions, we have a test. We have a scoring rubric to help you select who you should interview based on what your criteria are. We have individual rubrics where you score who you think did the best, if you have a team. And then we also have, when you put that together, what your, what the group thinks is the best. And it's all based on numbers so that emotion doesn't get into the, into the mix there. We do a lot of coordinating of regional surveys. You know, what are all the superintendents making in the area? What are business managers making? What are you doing for, how do you count your revenue challenges? I mean, anything you can think of, we probably have done the survey on. We, in 1998, when I started at ARC, E-rate system had just started. And so we had about two years under our belt when I finally asked Barbara Roberts, who was the old director, if I could help our districts apply for E-rates. And we went from about half of our districts gaining rates every year to 100%. So that felt really good. And then we are fiscal agents. So at NASA, the superintendent group from the west and the north, meet every month in Chisholm, and we're their fiscal agent. And then the southern group meets probably every other month. And we are the fiscal agents for that as well. So speaking of E-rates, I just, out of curiosity, I wanted to look at what does E-rates mean for HIBI? And I did 10 years of going into the system and looking, what were your gross requests, what were your discount rate, and what were you funding? And in 10 years, you'd receive over $1,160,000 for E-rate discounts. And Joel, Joel has been amazing this year, and giving me everything I need. But I always talked about, and this wasn't Joel, but we actually had one of the tech coordinators in a district that's close to here chasing the FedEx truck because he needed to get his application in the truck that day. So we've done a lot since, and the system itself has come along since.
Cindy, I have to ask if you regret asking Marv.
There are days.
If you could help schools do E-rate applications.
There are days. I gave it to Eve for a while, and Eve is very detailed. And she's very strict with the districts. And we just needed more finance, she just needed more time with finance, so I took it back. I may have regretted that, but I only have 519 more days to worry about.
Excuse me, I might have missed them. What are E-rates?
Oh, I am so sorry. So E-rates are a federal program to get discounted telecommunications services. In the beginning, it used to be phone and internet. Then they took away coverage for phones. And so it's your internet, it's your wide-area network. And they have a five-year budget that every district gets. It's about $167 per pupil unit. And you have five years to spend on network equipment. And that's where you see like the $343,000. Those bigger years are when you purchase the equipment. And Joel does a good job of using every dollar he can in his equipment budget, so. Any other questions on E-rates? I apologize, I should have, I assume everybody knows, I'm sorry. So this is our fee legend, it's just the 10-year history of it. The colored areas are where we have changed the rates. We're going to do an overhaul this year of the rates. So I'm sure you guys have heard about our cyber attack. After that, we moved all of our databases down to a server center in St. Paul. Region 3 has a very secure server center. They have more employees than we had. We had one employee, we expected him to do everything. And so that cost for each database is about $2,500. So what we're going to do is we're going to break out that cost and then kind of rearrange these per-pupil-unit prices. I don't think your bill is going to change substantially, it's just going to look a little bit different. We don't have any control over that cost. And the cost of, we actually reduced our technology staff. So the cost is about the same. We just wanted to put that separately because basically it's a floating cost chain. So this will change a little bit for the next year. This is the 10-year history of your, your ARC bills. You'll notice that in 2023, that's when you guys started getting Power School support from Beth, who we contracted with. I just want to make note that the 10-year total for your dues is less than your 10-year total of what you got in E-rates. So I think hopefully, it seems like a lot of money, but I think you get a lot for that, for that money. And again, the, we're trying not to increase the rates per pupil unit. And somebody, there is district representation. So when we talk about increasing prices, I get a lot of pushback. So we tried to pick them as well as we can. And that's basically, well, this is our support team on payroll. We had Nikki Oveen, who's been here for 43 years. Nicole and Jennifer are pretty new. Jennifer in finance has been for about five years. Eve, about 12. Cara is pretty new, and then Lori Blackman is retired. This is a major payback. In the student area, we have Phil and JP. They're relatively new. Kim is brand new. We, I guess, I was on a distant, I forgot to quote it. We had a co-op in South Central Minnesota contact us to see if we would take over supporting the districts working at campus. And we really haven't gotten out of our geographic area. So we worked with the other regions to make sure that they were okay with it because we didn't want to step on their toes, and they said absolutely. So we hired Kim, she works in that area. So that if there's one-on-one training, we're not going, we're not traveling four hours to get to them. And we are making more than enough money with those districts to support her salary. So that's a good even. And then I put Beth up there too, because she's helping out in the student area. So that is all I have. I'm open for any questions you guys have. Did you, are you all sleeping now?
Normally Cindy always has food too, so that's easy to make it worse. She had treats and then.
When, when we had the cyber attack, we learned how to make anything you could make in a crock pot. Because it was in the middle of the winter when we had record snowfall. And we didn't want districts leaving for an hour to find lunch someplace and come back. And we knew we couldn't afford to order out. So we, we made chili, we made tacos, we made spaghetti, we made everything you could think of. Sandwiches and, yeah. Any questions?
Very thorough, very nice, very educational.
So I noticed that neither Duluth or Grand Rapids is.
Right.
So what's it, what do they use?
So Grand, Duluth left ARC about 1995 or '96. And they're big enough, they can really hire their own people. And I think, is this being recorded? They're probably, they wanted two board members on the board because they wanted more control of our ARC. And I think the rest of the board said, no, we don't want to be bullied. And so at that point, they just left. They are using Skyward as their finance system.
So this is a national company that has some.
Yeah, they have student information system and finance. But they don't, they don't supply any finance support, it's just support for the software. We have had a request from Duluth because the business manager there used to be an ARC. She should be under ARC's umbrella, and she would really like to get some support from ARC. So we're actually looking at maybe some type of tier-two membership where she would only get finance support, and that's it. So we're kind of looking at that now. Grand Rapids left, oh, 14 months ago. They moved to Skyward. They hired a very bright new business manager who had worked with Skyward and didn't think she needed ARC. So we, we worked with them to help make that transition work. They have, they have lost $132,000, or excuse me, $123,000 in E-rate funding. And so I don't know that it was, it's not my own, their part to do that. But it wasn't my decision, and I think maybe the, the people who worked under the very bright business manager probably were the most frustrated with it. But, so they went to Skyward as well.
I just want to say I appreciate it, but I can't speak for Alex. But I would imagine in districts with few people in the business office, and even already have a few more, to hire somebody with the skills to know all this stuff, it would be very difficult to do for $100,000 a year. So I feel as though just having somebody to lean on and reach out to has got to be incredibly helpful.
Yeah, I'm just going to say that our office had some changes. ARC's been super great to work with. Cam and I was down there on Monday. I'm going back Friday to work on budgeting, so.
I told Kim, by the time you're done, she is going to love baked breads.
I'm not tearing up that.
She's not there, but she's getting close. Any other questions? And if you guys have questions, you can funnel them through Rick anytime. I'm willing to come up and talk to you anytime, so.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, good time. Thanks for coming.
Okay, with that, we'll move to line 12, the administrative reports. They have eight directors and chairman.
Chair, I'm going to just speak for myself as Director Gavardi. We participated in another district leadership team meeting yesterday. And again, it was hugely interactive and successful, and they were reviewing goals yet for this year. And so it was, it was a really good meeting, and it was yesterday.
There's a great article in PPS3 about a lot of businesses sucking up for our high school seniors as you recognize, and Quam design is donating senior picture packages for every family that's impacted by the further foundry shutdown. A huge order of community, nine families impacted minimum. In fact, a small business like that can reach out off a significant amount of opportunities for kids to receive your pictures. I think it's just awesome, testament to some of the quality businesses and people that live in this community.
Very good. With that, we'll move to the super record. Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Schick.
You're welcome.
I have a brief report, I'll keep things quick. Just the survey that we recently conducted for the sixth graders over at the Lincoln. I mentioned it at the last meeting, and we have results put together and a general overview of it. So by the end of the survey, we had 83 total responses. The main question I want to look at is thoughts and concerns from the sixth graders on the movement of seventh grade to the Lincoln. And the majority of the responses were pretty positive. They all had good things to say about it. They were looking forward to being able to have an opportunity to be with their friends in a smaller school space still. And I have a few of the comments written down. So one student said, it's fine to me because I get to spend more time with younger friends at the Lincoln. Another one said, I think it is a good idea because I don't feel prepped for high school yet. And then there were some more neutral responses where they don't really have too much of an opinion on if they stay or if they're going to go to the high school. One of them was, I don't mind whether we go to the high school or stay here, but I feel like it would be cool to go to a new school and explore. And then there were a few negative responses, looking forward to going to the high school. One of them said, I don't think it's the best because I wanted to go to the high school. But that was a relative minority of the responses we got. So collectively, most of the sixth graders were looking forward to it. In terms of changes and suggestions, I spoke with Principal Gavardi and gave him a more in-depth report on everything. There were a lot of policy suggestions that were more of his thing to deal with and not so much requiring board approval. But I know there were a couple suggestions that stuck out and had the most support from the sixth graders. And one of them was, they want a vending machine in their upperclass hallway. And they were looking for keyboard cases on their iPads like we have at the high school here, which I think would be actually pretty interesting if they could then get. And then there were also, I was speaking to Superintendent Aldrich about this, and Mr. Gavardi could probably clarify a bit better. But there were a few complaints about the sixth-grade hallway bathrooms. And it's my understanding, you mentioned that was recently.
Yeah, I'm going to have to go look exactly what that is because we've remodeled all the bathrooms at Lincoln about a year ago. So I hope there, there's that issue, but I'll have to address that.
Right, and like I said, Mr. Gavardi could probably speak to that more. But that was just one of the things on the survey that was mentioned the most. So I wanted to bring that up as well. And then some of the things they like at the Lincoln that they don't want to see get changed. One of the biggest ones is gym, and the gym teachers and the classes over there for that. The sixth-grade staff and the teachers, there are a lot of positive comments towards the teaching staff over there. And then of course, their recess and free time and with the playground renovations that will happen in the future as well. I'm sure they'll enjoy that. And then school activities, so like field trip opportunities and the color run and, you know, just a school sponsored activities. They tend to enjoy that a lot and are looking forward to getting another year for seventh grade. So overall, relatively positive responses. Few negative ones that we're looking forward to the high school, but overall, it seems like everyone's pretty intent with it, so, yeah, that's it.
And Christian, I heard it, and I, I'm going to share Christian's survey results with you. He's going to, he's going to give me permission and then I'll send it out to you. But I read through it today, it was really interesting. And I thought the sixth grade students, I mean, really did a nice job of responding in a respectful, mature way. I thought there was really, they're really wonderful responses.
I was expecting more Joel responses, honestly. A lot of them, no, but a lot of them took it actually pretty seriously, which is good to see too, coming from the under kids, so.
And I do believe, and I don't want to speak for Joel, but I think seventh through 12 does have keyboards attached to their iPads. So since they're seventh graders, they would have a keyboard next year.
Well, we made that distinction because they were all in the same building, so all the kids would have the same experience in that building. So I, I guess it'll be up for discussion. But the way we budgeted, the way we purchased, we cover seventh and 12th grade. I don't know if you want to carry the culture of have and have not, you know, between the sixth graders and the seventh graders, but we have them.
I think we'll have to talk with Mr. Gabardi and if, if a lot of that seventh grade instruction is going to be school-agey based, it'd be nice for them to have those keyboards.
And I'm not sure how the other grades systems work at the Lincoln currently either, but grades with iPads at least, if it's possible or within budget, or just any of the grades in Lincoln, did it keep works as well and normalizing that across all grades.
Well, thank you, Christian. You did a nice job and I know that Mr. Gabardi and Ms. Tui appreciate your help too because they're going to take some of those ideas and run with them. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, that was awesome.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to item B, administrators and staff. Kurt, I was just in the right.
Yeah, we had, I know, I think Kirk is all, well, he was loaded up to go first, I believe. And then we also had Joel Anderson.
Can you fair to Cindy, 10 minutes for you.
As long as I still get an hour. All right, well, thanks, Board Chair, for the opportunity. It's always nice to present about KUMYAD. Oftentimes, we're kind of forgot, gotten about, so again, thank you. I've covered the bullet points before in another presentation, so I won't go over those again. But again, we like our KUMYAD participants because they do support the school. More so than others that don't support it, just the KUMYAD, so. Just a quick overview of our early learning stuff. Registration did open for all of our early learning programs. So next year, we're leaving out fours and fives. There'll be all-day program, four classrooms. Registration opened February, about 47 registered so far. Six of those are in district. Our half-day threes include threes and four-year-olds. We have one classroom that goes at AM and PM. And right now, about 33, so we take about 36 kids there. So that's for the most part full, one out of district, registration now. Our PCFE, early childhood family ed, that's for five-year-olds. That's where the parents come with the kids. They stay for an hour, hour and a half. They'll do some group time and then eventually the parents split off for maybe a half hour to 40 minutes with a parent educator, so. That registration opens well, about 48 registered, 13 for the sibling care. And again, the sibling care is that the parent has a, your sibling or a child that's not in that class, they can go for free to a sibling care. So that parent has time with just that one child. So 13 registered for that and seven out of district for that particular program. Early childhood screening, and that's state mandated. It is a district program that KUMYAD happens to oversee. That's not uncommon for most districts, but it is a district program. We've got six, left sixes here, we have one more to go. That screen about 105 kids. Our next screen is March 22nd. We may throw one there in May, depending if school wraps up early with the realignment and packing up to do so. Because our early childhood teachers, what we have is a whole lot of packing up to do because the ELC is not getting packed so much. So if we have 70 kids sign up for school readiness and a chunk of those have not been screened yet, it might be a nice opportunity to get those kids screened before fall. Our kindergarten connections event is tentatively planned for people 18. That will be at Washington. Probably stage it out at ELC and then we invite the kids up to Washington to see the rooms. Some special events we have going on. We've got some open gyms already at ELC this year. We've got about 78 people come, which is great. Our next ones will be the 16th and then on the 20th of April. Well, the males in need event on the 21st, mom's night out on the 11th of April. We had P&amp;R speaker night, it was just a week and a half ago. I don't know if about 10 people show up. That was with Fairview, came up with a start. And then the one next Monday will be with Nora Holmes and Rich Marsis, who's, who speaks on childhood anxiety versus other early learning stuff. So so far this year, KUMYAD.
Can I ask the out-of-district numbers? Has there been a noticeable increase, decrease, data save?
So this year, I think I just looked at Trina's last report and I thought we ran around 10 in the fours. And I think there was about six or so in the threes. So maybe not as many in the threes, but we're probably about the same for the school readiness, the forest classes. So probably about the same as, as this last, this current year. So again, been really busy at KUMYAD this year. Sort of happy to see after the COVID stuff, participation registration across all of our programs so far this year since September, over 3,000, which is crazy, it's awesome. And about 20% are non-heming residents, so we're getting some folks, which is a national op in Grand Rapids. So we have some quality programs that folks like. And about a little over 150 instructors, staff and volunteers across all of our programs too that helped so far this year. I was a number, I'll have to go back and have taken check notes, can't be quite, but that's awesome. Our most popular programs, I won't read them all there, Volitas is something we started last year, which has been great. Of course, Dip of All, the adults, one of that's crescendo. We had 211 kids in youth football with a flight football this fall. Adults disabilities, about 334 have participated so far. Friday at rec in our bowling this year. And then our youth and adult aquatics, just this year alone, over 1,000 people have registered for those programs. So those are youth swim lessons, our adult stuff, which is water robots, aqua yoga, lap swim, staff swim. And then we've, we've open swimming as well on, on the weekends. So just, we started that, took over that program for the city last year, right about this time. We've got over 1,500 participants and registrations in those aquatic programs. Props to Alex Keeney on that one. Facility游泳 is going to be popular this year, like birthday parties, especially with the ELC. So 16 so far with more scheduled for spring and summer. So pool parties at the high school as well, but the majority of those are, we have two to three a weekend, or two to three a month, I'm sorry, for the ELC gym and commons for birthday parties. Oftentimes, we'll bring in some bounce houses into the gym. When you head into the gym in the commons, it's probably about 40 bucks an hour plus we'll have to be at the sorority there every weekend, but it's a nice affordable option for the university's party. Questions on those? So just looking ahead for spring and summer, currently collecting information in mind for our May through August programs. We'll be doing our bike rodeo again, a little bit different next year. Going off of the one go out to Crane Haven, we might want to keep that Lincoln, so maybe they'll switch to fourth grade versus third. We'll do our track fields, more Volitas, some diving, safety count. I'll be the last two weeks in June at the ELC, some more aquatics, of course, firearms safety, drivers training. We're going to do some PCV classes this summer. We'll take the summer off, we're going to have some gym type for PCV. Disappointed Director Gabardi isn't here. We're all set for the cheater walking here. So we'll go to register this spring, but we are going to ask people to register through the site. And there's a liability waiver and signs, it's kind of, you know, they're on their own, but. So that'll start up in June for the outdoor walking. And we're still doing the indoor stuff at the high school. About 25 people signed up for that walking at the high school this year. So we'll be doing an activity fair at the Moonroom Building on the 19th. Just stop by and find our booth. Excited about in May, Alex Keeney is going to be taking the lifeguard instructor course. So we will teach and train our own lifeguards, which is huge. There's not a whole lot of those options and those people up here in the Iron Range, so if anyone needs to train our own staff, we can offer classes, of course, like Rock Ridge or Grand Rapids, if those kids are coming, we can take that class to teach our life guards. We've recently made an approach, I mentioned it, Rick, a college approached us about taking over their college for kids program. So Alex and I, senior, I mean, with them next week or so, if I don't know for some of those details, so. That'll take place last couple of weeks in July. Well, I just, thanks for supporting KUMYAD. Kind of like the maintenance program and Joel's department. KUMYAD really works with every other department and every other school in so many ways, so really got to thank everybody. Questions?
What's the number of people in the aquatic program? How many pools are we using here?
We're primarily using the, the high school ones, the old pool and then the, the new pool too, when, when the swimming isn't session. We haven't been doing the Lincoln a whole lot, so.
The question, I guess, are we going to keep the Lincoln all year round?
I believe yes. I mean, does that have to be drained at one point and refilled? We've plugged maybe 60, 70,000 into it about a year and a half ago and retool it. It's, it's good to go because it's sat mothballed for two, three years.
I know. You know, Vans and Principal Gabardi, they're doing all those swimming lessons during the day for those kids. And they said, you know, fourth through seventh grade are going to be doing lessons next year in that pool. KUMYAD probably won't do a whole lot in there just because with the number of lifeguards and swim instructors that we have, we're, we're pretty tight, just covering the ones at the, at the high school here. But we will rent out that, the Lincoln pool for parties on occasion. We will staff lifeguards for that.
Renee, what's your question?
I was just going to jump into that, into the pool, the, the pool question. The Lincoln pool is used every day for, for fifth and sixth graders, or at least fifth and sixth graders for swimming. And that's like my kid's favorite part of the day is swimming. So it's used, it's just the KUMYAD uses, the pools here more for the swimming lessons and the after-school and the pool party activities.
One of the drawbacks, I've, I've heard with the Lincoln is because the lockers are downstairs, is that correct? That some of the adults that are, if it's being used for an adult program, they're up and down the stairs.
Adults love our pool, the old pool here at High School, because it's got water burn. That's, that's a big draw of that one.
And I think Director Gabardi is planning to, Principal Gabardi is planning to expand how much time Vans is in the pool next year, so, with the students at the Lincoln.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Lewis. Any other? Nope, that's it, Mr. Chair. Apologize. The ladies behind me are urging me to go really quickly. I thought we did. I thought Cindy wasn't going to do it. Sorry, Mr. Andy. You didn't have to apologize to me.
Well, I want to thank the board and the chair for this opportunity to give you just a quick update on technology in the district. And I'm going to, I'm not doing any, any shows on the screens. I'm going to kind of go over the year, right? So I'm going to go back and I'm going to start with what we started with that was new. Talk about what, you know, we're kind of in the middle of and then look, look forward a little bit, kind of like Kirk did. So in the beginning of the school year, we implemented a new management system for our iPads. That is a very big project. We completed that migration. If you can imagine, every single application, every single user, every single iPad, every single setting on every application of every iPad had to be reconfigured and built up. So we completed that migration. We implemented a new student safety system that has 24/7 human review. This is monitoring basically our, our Google accounts and our, our internet browsing on the iPads for bullying, self-harm. And it's reviewed by a third party, so we don't get a lot of false positives. And if there is imminent danger, we will get called 24/7 to look into the situation. So we implemented that new system this summer. And then we implemented a new copier management system that streamlined that for us as well as makes a, kind of a unified interface for any copier that you walk up to. Cybersecurity was a big, is an ongoing project and it's become more time-consuming for us in the technology department. So I'm going to list a bunch of things that we're, we've been doing in the cybersecurity area to kind of shore up our defenses. The summer, we worked with the admin team on implementing an incident response plan. So we all kind of have a basic idea of how, who do what, when and how, if something happens inhibing. We've implemented a, a monitor for personal identification information that's being shared. So if somebody shares credit card numbers or social security numbers or things like that, we can get alerts on that and we can actually shut down that SharePoint. There was actually a school down in the metro area that their business, somebody in their business office sent out the entire staff of the school district, social security, date of birth, home address, phone number, everything. So this is a system that monitors for that activity and that allows us to kind of shut that stuff down. We also implemented, or are in the middle of implementing, a managed detection and response system. What this is, is software that is put on the computers and servers that watches for behaviors on those machines that looks out of the ordinary. And if something is detected, this is a managed system, so there will actually be a third-party company that will get an alert. And again, this is 24/7 service. And if they deem the event to be critical enough, they can isolate that machine any time of the day or night, any day. And that's important because most cyber events are triggered on holidays and weekends, kind of like December 7th, right? Sunday morning when everybody's, you know, asleep or at church, right? That was implemented with a federal grant that is being distributed by the state. It's a federal cybersecurity grant. And so we're getting those services at a very, very reduced price. We've got those up and running right now. We've implemented a new backup system, including an air gapped backup. What that means is we have a backup system that backs up all of our data, but if our network is breached, they can get to that backup. So we have another backup system in another building that only turns on and it backs up the backup and then it turns off. So if something happens, they can't get to that second backup. We've also implemented single sign-on with PowerSchool that adds two-factor authentication to a PowerSchool, so that was a, a big hole that we plugged. And then recently, we joined the Southwest, West Central Co-ops cybersecurity collaborative. And then recently, we joined the Southwest-West Central Co-ops Cybersecurity Collaborative. So that is a service co-op like ARC or the Northeast Service Co-op, and they offer cybersecurity So they're basically working with our district to implement and analyze our cybersecurity stance. I meet with them once a week, and we go through, just work our way down the list of things as we kind of tighten and tighten, tighten our defenses. Since joining that collaborative, we've completed a Level 1 assessment, I'm actually going to be reviewing those results next week. What they do is they ask a bunch of questions, and then they get back a report that says these are our weaknesses that we need to work on, kind of like when you get an audit, right, a financial audit. We implemented a centralized SEAM system. This is something where we take all the logs from critical systems, and those logs are sent to a centralized location, so they're watching for every time somebody logs in, somebody logs out, somebody attempts to log in but they can't log in, is software up to date. All this kind of stuff is sent to a central location, and then that system monitors for strange behaviors, and it also gives reports, it can do vulnerability, ongoing vulnerability scans, so it looks for, hey, the software on this server is out of date, you need to update it, that kind of thing. We've implemented that. And then we're continuing to do our InfoSec phishing exercises and training with our staff. As we look forward to what we're doing now and looking forward to the next couple of months, we are pulling new fiber to the Cheever Field, that will bring basically our network services that we enjoy in the school buildings up to Cheever Field. It's primarily for the huddle cameras and the security cameras, and we'll put a phone extension out there, things like that. And kind of related to that, we just filed our E-Rate, that's kind of piggybacking on what Cindy talked about with our E-Rate program, and I renegotiated our internet and fiber connectivity contract. Our annual cost out of pocket, what we pay for, is going to go from $45,000, $46,000 down to $5,000. 90% reduction in our internet and networking costs. So that was pretty cool to see happen, and that's with adding Cheever Field to it, so we actually added an additional fiber run, and we're still reducing. Some of that reduction is also coming because we, in the tech department, when we're doing our MARS reporting, free and reduced lunch program reporting, we've increased our accounts for that. So our discount with the E-Rate program moved, if you saw that on the slide, if you noticed, we were 70% for all those years, for nine years, and then this year it's 80%. So when you were asking, what is the E-Rate program? So when I say that our cost was, used to be $45,000 a year, the actual invoice for that adds 70% to that number, because the E-Rate application that we do pays the other 70%. Next year, we'll be paying 80%. We're working on an automated account provisioning system, so when new staff come into the district, when new students come into the district, it will automatically create their network accounts throughout all of the different systems that they log into, and when we do that, we're going to have a new password policy for our staff that will make those things more secure as well. Right now, we have our eye on the upcoming MCA testing season, so we're preparing all the iPads, making sure they meet all the specifications for state testing. And then, looking ahead, we're wondering if we close the school down, really how that's going to impact our iPad collection, and with all these moves that we have pending this summer, you know, how we manage that, moving the computers, updating the phone systems, keeping our iPads in a secure location during all these moves, and getting everything where it needs to go. So those are kind of what we're looking at in the next couple of months. That's all I have for you. Do any of you have any questions you want to ask?
Spinning off on kind of the move, looking ahead to next year, the Blue Jacket Virtual Academy. From an IT perspective, are you being prepared? Is there anything more we need to invest?
The information that I have at this time, in my mind, this is going to be very similar to what we did with COVID in lockdown. My assumption is that we're going to use the same tools that we've used before, you know, SchoolAG for the delivery, Power School for attendants, and things like that, so I don't think that that's going to impact us too much. And as more information comes across, we'll see what happens, but I think that because we did so much of this during the COVID lockdown, I think it's going to model that pretty closely.
Very good, lots of work.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That's it, we're out, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll go to item C, any committee reports. Here we go, we'll go to item 13, Administrative Business, or Alex?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I made a motion to approve the district realignment, beginning with the 2024-25 school year.
So moved, support. The white director, are you going to support White Director Poulter? Any discussion?
You know, I kind of followed up on some negatives that I heard about, and I want to thank the Navy for following up on one of them too, but information is powerful, and as time has gone on, from when this first leaked out, to now, I think people feel a lot better about it, that it's more exciting, and it just goes back to information very far.
Thank you for the input, but on the other hand, a lot of that information had to be kept confidential to certain dates too, so it's like a catch-22, you'd like to, people announce something.
But I do think, I agree with Director Martin, I think as questions come up, or have come up, I think our administrative team has been very responsive, in many cases, correcting misinformation, so that's been very helpful.
When we plan, if the board approves the realignment, we plan as an admin team to meet tomorrow, just to regroup a little bit, because we were really waiting on some of those March 1 deadlines for some retirements to really finalize some things, so we also want to get a common, consistent message out to all of the buildings, late this week, early next week, on where we're headed, because there's still some confusions, still some misunderstandings, still some things that we need to iron out. So we plan to meet tomorrow and basically finalize that plan, and inform everybody that needs to be informed, and to roll on ahead. The school year's almost over, it's almost over, it's gone so fast this year.
And I see Marie sitting here, so I think anything she can do, she always writes great articles, but just to get information out there, I think is really helpful, and I think it helps just squelch some of the misinformation.
Do you all in favor, say aye. Aye, hold the same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
I think it is a motion to terminate the business services agreement between Hiving Public Schools and Chisholm Public Schools effective June 30th, 2024.
So moved, support. The white director, are you going to support White Director Poulter? Any discussion?
I've been kind of out of the loop on this one. Can I get a little backup?
Sure, so I, I mean, I maybe turn it over to Alex, but I'll give just a thousand mile view quickly. The changes that we've had in our business office in the last year, Amy Ferring had left, Pam took a new position, we hired Jamie Waters, who took Pam's position, with all of the added concerns over finance related to S.R. money and the COVID money that we're kind of tying up and trying to finish up here, it's become overwhelming for our business office to manage both districts. So we had an idea of hiring an additional person to help support Chisholm, and as we sat and we talked through, it just didn't make any sense for us to hire that person to provide that service, and we're in an agreement with them, we're potentially with a 60-day notice, either party could be out, and to be on that, be on the hook for an employee potentially hundred, hundred twenty thousand dollar position, and not knowing if our agreement will last a year, or two years, or three years, with that 60-day hold, but really, it's not a, it's not a Chisholm-based decision, it's really an inter-office decision that we're, we've been struggling, and we've got to get back just to taking care of our district and our needs. And if I'm summarizing that, Alex, if I can add to that, your office, so.
Not at all.
So we met with Mr. Morrison last week, a couple of different times, it wasn't a real shock to him, we'd been talking, we were pretty close, we worked pretty closely, he knew it was coming. It's also, I think, for Chisholm, I think it'll really be a necessary thing for them to have business office people in place when they're going through this bill. It probably wouldn't have been manageable for our office to handle everything that we've been doing and handle a building project at that site. It doesn't affect our other relationships, as far as what we're collaborating with, we're still working with Community Ed. Kirk is doing a fantastic job there, and they just love the service that we're providing. We still share Indian education coordinators, one with sports, and probably two other things that I'm not thinking of off the top of my head, but this would be a good move for us, keep us solvent and in a good place, and I think it would be good for Chisholm to, with everything they have coming, they need some of their own people, so.
And they indicated that they want somebody to run the project, so, yes, it works out all the way.
And so this would be to terminate, not only Alex's work, but also when it comes to payroll, payroll.
Business services.
All business services.
Yeah, pay agreement.
Good discussion. Unfortunately, we're part of life, we have to do what we can to stay afloat, and good luck to both districts, I guess.
You know, another piece is, is we, when we came in three years ago, they were in a much different place, their business manager had just left, they, they were really in a spot where they weren't going to make payroll in the next two weeks. So we, we came in at that time with an idea like, that we were helping them to get them through a tough situation, and I think that we, we had grandiose idea that we could do a lot more together, and we did, we did a very good job, but with the changes in our office, just the management of two school districts, which is too much work. I'm sure that Cindy Olsen could, you know, from ARC, she's probably nodding, she understands exactly what we're saying, because she deals with it on the other end, right, when these agreements fall apart with districts, then she's jumping in to bail them out and help them, and it's a big job. It's also, our staff, I think it's good for our staff, it's, people were stretched very thin, and it was eventually going to reach a breaking point, that it would snap, and then not only would we be in trouble, Chisholm would also be in trouble, because we're supporting them, so we wish them the best, and I hope they do the same for us.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried, thank you. With that, item 14, any discussion?
I think we have three other speakers that I forgot to add. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, that's the last one.
One more item, we'll be looking for a superintendent.
Turn that camera off before I turn red, quickly.
You may have an update on the SRO, what's going on with the state, the SRO program?
Well, it looks, it looks like what I saw just recently, that passed the House and hasn't gone to the Senate yet, is they're basically exempting school resource officers from the prone, being held responsible for their prone restraint, but it looks like it's got an uphill battle in the Senate, so I don't know what's going to happen.
The reason I asked is, you know, the local police department, we're down five officers, they are down five officers, and for you, the, you know, ability to get an SRO officer program fighting.
Well, the only thing I think that that would help us with is, you know, right now, Officer Holverson is basically just working at the elementary. If he had the green light to return to the high school, then he could have some time back here in this building, I would think, but I've talked to Chief Esty, and yes, they can't find enough patrolmen, so he doesn't have an officer to give us, even if they do change the laws. Today.
And I think we received an update from Principal Sikora a few meetings ago, quite a few years ago, and I think that the incidents were done fairly well from last year, has that been...
Right, they've gone down, and we're keeping a running spreadsheet that, it's lined up, so Chief Esty gets that, as well as Superintendent Poulter, so every time we have to make a call, we log that, and I think there's been maybe forty some up to date, we had a lot more in the fall than even now, and so that's gotten better. But there's actually a really good presence here, every morning, someone, someone from law enforcement is in the building, walking the halls, or standing, visiting the staff and the students, someone at lunch walks through, and then after-school, they're rotating between patrolling outside, the memorial building, parking lot, or inside the building, so there's still a presence here. Good, so, thank you.
Yeah, and actually, not that we don't miss Officer Casey here at the high school, we do, but I've seen more police officers in our building this year than any year prior. I mean, we, like you said, we have, Chief Esty has directed them, when they have a free moment, if they're in between calls, that they're supposed to make our spot a priority, and they've done that.
Isn't that, they know where the classrooms are, they're getting to know what the kids look like, where the doors are, so, because before they didn't know, it was just Officer Casey, and now they all know where everything is.
Thank you, I got one more. One more, I'm sorry to everybody here, but with this change, now that we're not taking care of the business office, how is our collaboration program going with Chisholm? Are you still meeting, are we still talking about it, or are they kind of...
So we haven't had any further meetings since the last one, but at the last Chisholm Board meeting, their board was talking, reaching out to us to get in a meeting at least a quarter, so I think they would like to do that again, but I haven't heard anything today, so.
You know, with all the changes we're making here, if we're going to, if they want to do something, we want to do something, to me, that would be the talent to do it. That being said, we'll turn it over to Director Poulter.
Motion will adjourn.
Without objection, meeting is adjourned at 5 o'clock, and thank you all for your attendance and comments, meeting is adjourned.